I call this meeting out to order. This is the regular school board meeting of the Northfield Public Schools. It is Monday, February 26th, and the time is 7:00 PM.
Dr. Hillman, I believe that there are just a few items in our table file to add to the agenda.
Yes, there were just a couple of personnel changes as well as a committee report, and then also we had a gift agreement added in the table file as well. We add those for your consideration this evening.
So if there's no objection, we will add those to the agenda as we move forward. Great. Now, we are ready to move on to public comments. This is an opportunity for residents of the Northfield School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? All right. We will move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet the minutes from the last school board meeting on February 12th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Jeff. There are second? Second by Rob? Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We are ready to move on to announcements and recognition.
Yes, I have a couple of announcements and recognitions for this evening. Tomorrow, or excuse me, on Wednesday, February 28th, it's Minnesota's Second Annual School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, and we want to let our bus drivers know how much we appreciate their dedication to safety. I know many board members attend the Bus Driver Appreciation Breakfast. It's usually in November that Bridgewater Principal Nancy Antoine has, and it's a wonderful experience. You know, the children create cards for the bus drivers. It's great. This was something that Governor Dayton put in to, put it in a couple of years ago. We want to make sure we let our bus drivers know our appreciation for their dedication to students and their safety. The Minnesota School Bus Operators Association and the Minnesota Association of Pupil Transportation have teamed up to recognize drivers who shuttle about 760,000 Minnesota students each day. Let that number sink in, right? And Governor Dayton has issued his approval in the form of a proclamation. So on February 28th, a group representing state legislators, school administrators, and the Minnesota State Patrol will hold a press conference in the metro area honoring exceptional bus drivers. KYMN radio listeners can hear Benjamin Bus Manager Jenna Dartis. They could have heard of her this morning at 8:45 AM on KYMN, but of course, they record everything, and you can go and listen to the podcast at KYMNradio.net. So if you'd like to do that, you can. And students are nearly eight times safer riding to and from school in a school bus than they are in cars, the governor's proclamation said, thanks to the rigorous safety standards for vehicles and drivers, as well as student training efforts. So again, we're very thankful for our relationship with Benjamin Bus. We know they're one of the best student transportation companies in the state, and we're happy for our drivers to have their day this Wednesday. And then, it's almost as if we had planned this because we just heard the wonderful choir come through the hallways, and we were alerted to this, and of course, in typical Northfield fashion, Kyle Eastman got an award in November that we just learned out about because, you know, we're the kings of high narrow lights under bushel baskets, right? So Vocal Essence was pleased to present the award for creative programming to Kyle Eastman, Director of Northfield High School's Concert Choir. The award is presented annually to a Minnesota-based, non-professional choir organization in order to uphold high standards of excellence in repertoire selection, to acknowledge and reward creativity in performing choral performance, and to affirm the importance of quality secondary and undergraduate choral training throughout the state of Minnesota. And what Kyle had said for both our singers and our audiences, that the programming is the most important thing that he does. He believes creative programming includes music, which acknowledges our roots as choral musicians, champions current composers and repertoire, crosses cultural boundaries, entertains and challenges singers and audience members, tells a story, and he believes programming should be varied so regular audience members enter with a sense of, what will we get this time? And if you've been to any of our music programs, you know that's exactly what Kyle Eastman does. A really great variety that challenges our kids and provides a great service to our community. So, final announcement this evening. You've probably seen, it's a busy place here tonight. We have a makeup basketball game going on in the gym, and we had a ninth grade orientation this evening, so the next round of freshmen already getting ready for the 2018-19 school year. So, those are your announcements from me for this evening.
Great. And anyone else have announcements or recognition? Rob?
I should have mentioned this last time.
Did I make that wrong?
Yep. I should have mentioned this last time, but on February 3rd, there was a preliminary, preliminary round of the Be Heard Minnesota Youth Poetry Slam Series at Carlton, and three Northfield High School students moved up to the semifinals for the state. So they'll be competing in Minneapolis or St. Paul on March 10th or March 17th. That's Rayanna Richmond, Alondra Perez, and Chris Lozaro. So, three students from Northfield. This is a statewide competition which had not been, this is the first year that it's been in Northfield, and so it's pretty exciting to have Northfield High School students compete in it.
Other announcements? Well, we have one committee report. This is the time where we add our committee reports, and I put in one for the Northfield Forward, which those of you may still think of it as DPAC. And we've continued the new approach, so I thought it would be helpful for board members, this was in your table file, to hear a little bit about how that approach has gone. So this particular meeting on February 19th, we were looking at all the PLCs, and it was pretty tremendous. The Mary Grace Hansen had everyone in four different groups and sent the materials out ahead of time. So each group had between 20 and 22 evidence of practice, which is the PLC documentation to review prior to the meeting. And that's what's so amazing about, you know, the people that volunteer their time and come, because, you know, we have community members, and parents, and staff, all getting together to review these. And what we did was look at them and think about what was good, what could be improved in order to be understood, and what were some of the bright spots. And people were really enthusiastic about the process. Those who were in PLCs felt like it was almost a professional development by going through and reviewing each other's, you know, the documents and how people were thinking about them. We had a discussion about who is the intended audience going forward, whether glossary terms might be useful. So anyway, it was a really productive process, and I'm really excited about the way that DPAC has evolved to become this committee. Excellent. All right. We are ready for the first report, which I believe Val Merstark is going to present our operating capital and long-term facilities maintenance budget. So board members, you have in your packet the slides and one-sheeter.
Good evening. Maybe. All right, so I can just have the arrow. Just arrow over. So tonight, I'm going to present the capital and long-term facilities maintenance proposed budget for 1819, if you can believe that. We have kind of been inching it up a little bit earlier each year. This is an item for information tonight, and we'll ask you to approve it at the next meeting. And really, that allows us to formally go out and get bids for the projects and those sorts of things, because we obviously aren't allowed to spend money without your approval. So that allows us to kind of get in on the front end before all of the contractors' schedules start filling up and those sorts of things, and has typically led to some better pricing for us. So, that's why we are doing this now. So, I've included a few more pictures this year of just some projects and the types of things that this funding can do for our district. So this is the middle school tennis court resurfacing that was done this past year. You can see it was in pretty rough shape before, and it looks pretty great right now. So our capital consists of four different revenue streams. Our operating capital is a levy and aid formula. I won't go into the whole formula, but we get roughly $222 per pupil unit. It also includes our lease levy, which is just levying for specific leases that we have. This has historically been about $330,000. The last two years has been a little bit higher as part of our membership in the Cannon Valley Special Ed Co-op. Our capital levy is our voter-approved $750,000 levy, and then our long-term facilities maintenance. And that was new last fiscal year, and it combined our deferred maintenance revenue stream and our health and safety revenue stream into one, and actually increased, it's been a three-year phase-in, so next year will be the final year, and we'll be at the max, which is $380 per pupil unit. And that equates to approximately $1 million more annually than we were receiving with the deferred maintenance and health and safety. So, the opportunities we have with this additional funding are pretty exciting. The capital budget is part of the general fund, so when I present the general fund in May, those numbers will be included, but we are required to present it separately just because of there's a restricted category and just the way the MDE rules are. So this year, the total, or this year, next year, the proposed capital budget is projected to be just shy of $3.5 million. You can see the breakout there. Historically, operating capital was our largest, and now our long-term facility maintenance is obviously our biggest source of revenue in this, in this fund. So, it'll be about, our LTFM, Long-Term Facility Maintenance, will be about 44% of the total overall capital revenue. And this is an increase of about $313,000 more than last year. So the way this, the way that we handle budgeting for this is each December, I project what we will get for our different funding streams, and there's a few different required commitments that we have paid annually out of this funding stream. And then if there's resources remaining, which typically ranges between 200 and 400,000, sometimes a little more, they, we actually have a capital committee that meets every December, and they get to allocate the funds based on a list of projects. So Buildings and Grounds brings projects that they've had express interest, Technology brings them, the Building Principals bring projects, and as a group, we come to consensus and prioritize what makes the most sense for the upcoming year. It's a great process to be part of because it's everybody working together and really being intentional about what will help move our district forward and using the limited resources we do have in this fund. So some of the required commitments we have are, the leases, obviously, for lease levying revenue, we're going to have those expenditures as part of that. There are some additional things in there because we cannot levy 100% of all of our leases. We can, we have to take out the operating costs and those sorts of things. The lease purchase agreement that we have for the Sibley addition, that will be, I believe that is, goes through 2024. And then we do have some prioritized allocations, so every year, we allocate a per-student amount for the buildings to have discretionary capital spending, and textbooks and digital curriculum always gets an allocation. The other leases encompasses all of our iPad leases and the new MacBook lease, so that's all encompassed in that amount. And then the capital committee recommended $546,000 of additional projects for the coming year. And then the long-term facility maintenance, there is a 10-year plan that the board approves in July, I believe, and that kind of lays out the plan for what we know are upcoming, and we, Jim and I kind of look at that list and say, how much money do we have? Because typically, the list exceeds the revenue, and then prioritize those projects based on what was on the list and anything, you know, more urgent or pressing that came up in between the time that it was approved and when we're finalizing the list. So we're looking at a total expenditures of about $2.9 million. So this is the summary. I did choose to show them separately only because they do have separate restricted fund balance codes. So if we don't spend the money, all the revenue that we receive, we do have to isolate those dollars, and we can only spend them in the future on the required commitments that we have. There are specific lists of things that we are allowed to spend these dollars on. Most of it goes, the long-term facility is for, you know, prevention and further erosion of the facilities and those sorts of things. We can't add a classroom. Basically, if we replace something, it has to have the same purpose that it had before, those sorts of things. So we are projecting to end 1819 in the operating capital slightly higher with about $406,000. If you recall, we did have a goal of about $600,000 for our operating capital, and that was prior to the Long-Term Facility Maintenance Fund and the additional revenue stream that we've had. And that goal was really for some catastrophic boiler explosion that we would have to replace. That would now be replaced with the LTFM dollars. So we do not need to maintain 600,000, and as you can see, we're projecting to be about 4. I would say 200,000 is the minimum that we would probably maintain in that restricted fund balance category. The Long-Term Facility Maintenance Fund, you can see that we are intentionally growing that fund balance. We are projecting it to be about $1.3 million at the end of next year, and a couple of different reasons for that. It's a significant revenue stream in comparison to what we had, and so by growing that, we can actually just pay for projects that we would have had to bond for in the past. So we will save interest on the bond, you know, financial services fees, and all of those, all the things that go with that process. And it's a lot of money, and that can do a lot of projects, and Jim is only one person with his team, so making sure that we have a reasonable number of projects that we can manage so that we're ensuring the quality and those sorts of things is also something that we balance with what we're deciding to do during the year. So some of the upcoming projects that are included in those expenditures, the list on the left are the, some of the $546,000 that the capital committee recommended. A UV light sanitizer at the middle school, which I understand will help with the odors and the, kind of the sensitivities that some of the people have in that environment. Replacing a delivery van, 16 round cafeteria tables at the high school, five Mamava lactation stations, some wiring upgrades at the middle school, and a new firewall. The middle school project is basically ensuring that all of the classrooms are set up with the cables in the same places, because we've got a lot of plugins on one side and audio on the other and that sort of thing, and so just making sure that we have some consistent setups for certain teachers so they know what to expect and can have, don't need to have cords running across the classroom. The LTFM projects, the middle school front driveway, I've got some pictures, and I'll talk a little bit more about that coming up here. Resurfacing the pool, resurfacing the high school tennis court, similar to the picture of the middle school. Just our normal, every year, we have some kind of driveway crack repair that we're doing, replacing some cabinets at Sibley, some flooring and carpet, replacing a vertical lift here at the high school, and the middle school water pressure pump. I just handpicked a few of those. There are several more that we will be doing as well, but that's just a few of the bigger ones, and probably more noticeable ones that you'll see coming up. So this is a picture, we did actually buy some of those cafeteria tables this year as well, and they actually fold up in half. There's 12 seats, and you can kind of see in the back of the picture, the existing tables with all of the chairs. So the fold-up tables are actually significantly faster for the custodial staff to fold up and clean after lunch. And what did you tell me they're called?
The communicator.
The communicator, because they're round, so everybody in every seat can see each other versus just a rectangular table, apparently. The Mamava lactation station, so we did approve one of those this past year, and it is currently at Longfellow. We had several new moms coming back this past year, and that is obviously our building with the most space constraints. So this actually just sits in a hallway downstairs, and it plugs into the wall, and it is an exclusive space for moms to take care of their lactation. And it's been, it's had great reviews from the staff. And so as we continue to have space constraints in our buildings with our student load and all the other wonderful programming that we have, we decided to actually just buy one for each building. So our primary purpose would obviously be for our staff. That is why we're purchasing them, but depending on location, the code is on the door, so if there's an activity going on and it's open to the public at that point, if it's in an area that's open. So, we're pretty excited about that. It'll be nice to have a designated spot so that people don't have to worry about, is the conference room booked, you know, and it will be designated for just that. So, that's pretty exciting for the staff. And the proposed middle school change, I'm sure you're all aware that sometimes there's traffic jams up there, and it's a pretty long walk from the actual parking spaces up to the front door. So we received a couple of different proposals, and this is the one that we will be moving forward with, basically to take out that loop and add additional parking and some handicap spaces and kind of reduce some of that plaza area. So it will not only add parking, but make the handicap accessible parking much more accessible. So we're excited about that, that will be happening this coming summer. And then this is just a picture of the Bridgewater roof being done this past summer. So I will gladly take any questions. Jim Colseth, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, is here. If you have detailed project questions, we will welcome them.
Board members, questions? No?
What does a vertical lift?
What that would allow us to do would be for a handicap chair, wheelchair, to go on a lift from the level of the gym floor up one level to the weight room floor. My understanding is they had one there several years ago, and it was broken, and it was, has been removed for quite some time, so we're just replacing it, basically.
Jeff?
This is always pretty obvious from the get-go. I'm just wondering why I missed that. Day one, it's like you gotta be a marathon sprinter to get to the front door.
It's part of the wellness program.
Yeah, it's physical ed thing, you sign up to get to the front door.
For the community, too.
Yeah, so it's good, good to see that that can happen. Look forward down the back.
Amy?
I just want to add to Jeff's comment that I hope that some of those parking spaces are marked for visitors, because I can't tell you how many times I just needed to drop something off and ended up parking way at the other end of the drive, at the parking lot, walking all the way up there and just go to the front office and drop something off and come out. So it'll be so nice to be able to sort of scoot in and out quickly.
Yep.
That's the idea.
Other questions?
Just a comment. Thank you, for one thing, I mean, I love pictures. I love that you put this graph in color, because when we print them in black and white, it's typically hard to differentiate, so I thank you. And I also thank you for this paragraph here about being cognizant to prioritize items that can be repurposed or moved with us in the event that we would build a new high school or recreate them, things like that, so thank you.
Any other questions? Rob?
I'm just looking at the, excuse me, the lactation station.
Yeah.
Which kind of looks like a cargo container to me.
Yep. It's like a little pod.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, like, you've mentioned the positive reaction, I'd just like to hear a little bit more about that. I mean, is this a response to not wanting people to nurse in public, or people wanting privacy, or, you know, what's motivating?
So, federal law actually requires us to provide a space for nursing mothers. It cannot be a bathroom, it has to have an outlet. And so, Human Resources, Malibu, has designated a space every single year in every single building, because we're required by law to do that. And typically, what happens, all well-intentioned, but if it's a conference room, you know, it's often busy because of, we're using all of our spaces to the best of our ability, or it, you know, something happens and it becomes a new classroom, or a, you know, instructional space, or those sorts of things, and we are required by law to have a space. And so this is a surefire way that says, this is where it is, and it's not going to be repurposed for any reason, because this is what it's for. And it allows the buildings to utilize all of their spaces without having to worry. And quite frankly, it's a recruiting tool. You know, as a new mom, at one point, like, that's important, and it's not something that you want to have to go knock on your, you know, boss's door and say, can I use your office? So having a designated space, I think, is going to be really important for our staff to encourage that and just have the option available for them.
I think it's great. It's a, it's a good use of the money. My mom was a teacher, and she nursed me in the principal's office, so.
I think the other piece with it, too, is the fact that they are also, they're not, they are portable. So while we, I couldn't lift them up myself, but if we have a situation where we have a certain building that has a higher number of new mothers in one year and a building that has none, you know, we can relocate them to different areas to be able to accommodate that. We want to make sure, we're in the children business, you know, we want to make sure when people are at this very formative time of their life, that people have a safe, a clean, and a good place to be able to take what we know research says is a very important action for them and their family.
Can I just add, I was going to add, so there are five new mothers this year at Longfellow, and there is no staff at Longfellow right now that have their own office. So there is no place that anyone would have a private space left at Longfellow. And so it's certainly for our staff first, but on, on the 15th of February, when we had the Early Mentress Open House, and people lined up three hours in advance, we had two community members who also used that space because it was available, and again, that prevented us from having to send them into somebody's office, because they would have needed a space. So it's very handy for that, as well.
And interesting, it isn't necessarily just nursing, it's home labor.
Correct.
For the staff. And is this available to any ALC young mothers at Longfellow?
Sure. It certainly would be. We have some mothers there that would choose to come down to the infant room and do that, and maybe would certainly, they can do that if they want, but they could also go there as well, and they could pick up their children, go there, too.
So I just want, if we look at the list of upcoming projects, if you can go back to that, Val, what I really want to point out to board members and to the community is the real intentional way that we're looking at the different funding streams that we have available to us. So we're being very intentional about using the capital dollars for projects that are capital-related, and the long-term facilities maintenance revenue, remember, that's a, a stream of revenue that we got from the legislature three years ago. Senator Kevin Dahl, a teacher here at our high school, authored that legislation to really make sure that we have a funding stream that can make sure that we can keep the buildings up and going. And so there's some specific rules about that, so you'll see that we can only, basically, the, the area has to do the same function at the end that it had at the beginning. And so you see the list of projects in the long-term facilities maintenance, I really credit Jim Colseth and Val for looking very intentionally, what are the things that qualify for long-term facilities maintenance versus the capital. I think we're being very strategic in how we both, use both funding sources, and it goes back to us being tried to be, trying to be very good stewards of the dollars that we have to make the maximum utilization. So, really great work by everyone who's been involved, the administrators who are part of the capital allocation team, looking out in terms of what's available in long-term facilities maintenance. We are really going to get a lot done next year, because believe it or not, September 4th is not all that far away in Jim Colseth's world. So, he's already lining stuff up to happen right away when school ends in June, because the timeframe between the end of school and the beginning of the school year, and if you think about it, for example, there's a couple of things at the pool, that's even a shorter timeframe, right? Because students will start practices, you know, mid-August, so the fact is that it's so important that we do this earlier and earlier every year so that we can be on top of things, get the best bids, make sure that we're competing for people's businesses. We are in the driver's seat, not the vendor's. So, really great job by folks, appreciate it, and I just, it shows how intentional we are.
Rob?
I'm just wondering, as you mentioned that piece, that once we purchase, for example, five- five lactation stations, maintenance of those, does that then come under long-term facilities maintenance? Can we maintain those with this other fund?
I don't think that would qualify. The, the LTFM has really, I mean, there's categories of roofing and flooring and those kinds of things. It's pretty specific. Equipment maintenance is not typically one of those. So the, we're replacing the jewelry van, but it's not considered LTFM because that's really about the, the facilities and making sure that the flooring and the roofing and all of that stuff is intact, if that makes sense.
So new equipment that we buy has, maintenance of that has to come out of the capital?
Perfect.
I have one more question. We talked about the vertical lift. How are students in wheelchairs or crutches getting between those floors now?
Right now, they have to go outdoor 10 and then go outside and then around to the east and then go in to door nine. So it's very inconvenient.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Especially with the snow.
There's not an elevator there?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
The elevator's on the other side of the gym. It's on the side of the gym by the upper cafeteria. This is over by the weight room.
Yeah, where they can go from the gym to the weight room.
And the elevator actually doesn't stop at that, that weight room level. The old pool, it's kind of a mid-level and the elevator.
Yeah, the mezzanine room.
No, it goes first and up and that's it.
And that's it. Yep, okay. Now I get it.
All right. More questions?
So I was just curious on the capital levy. That's the voter-approved levy for the $750,000. What, do they have four years left and then we have to look at?
Yep, I believe it's 2023, if I remember correctly. Great. Thank you.
What I really appreciated about this report is having those pictures. You know, I, I love that you give us the narrative and, and then the, the dollars that are so important for us to understand, but to have those pictures, particularly with some of the new things that you're doing, that really helped. So thank you.
Good, I'm glad.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We are ready to move on to our next item for discussion report, which is the expansion of the contingency fund proposal.
So that's me. And I don't have any slides here. I just have the narrative that I've included in your packet because it's really more of a report and we're not asking for any action this evening. But as you know, we are really committed to continuing to try to address the near-term priorities and the ongoing priorities within our strategic plan. And one of the areas that we have not had as much dramatic traction as we have had in some other areas is the near-term priority of developing a long-term solution that allows for reasonable class size while maintaining financial stability. And so one of the ways that we addressed that last year is I asked for your permission to expand the contingency fund from 3.0 FTE to 4.0 FTE. And just as a primer for folks, the contingency fund is a set of FTE that our administrators have control over to address specific class size issues each year. So far, there certainly has not been enough to address all of the class size issues that we would like, but we have prioritized in terms of, for a long period of time, if you remember when we transitioned the Compañeros program from being a shared, a teacher that did the Spanish portion, a teacher that did the English portion, we used some of the contingency money to help us sunset that program. The past couple of years, we've had a specific section at Bridgewater and at Sibley where they have needed some additional support in breaking down class sizes at the elementary level. And then those are assigned also typically at the high school and middle school. The way we address contingency is in the form of an overload assignment where a teacher who is already teaching a full load has an additional assignment. And by the contract with the Northfield Education Association, they receive compensation above and beyond. Usually what happens is they give up a supervision, a study hall in order to teach an extra class. So at the secondary buildings, that's typically divided out in 0.2 FTE sections or one class period, if you would think. So that's how the contingency fund works. We take the amount that you have authorized us, we are able to distribute that. And then the beauty is at the end of every year, all of that money, all of that FTE comes back to the district administration to be able to address what the next piece could be next year. Now, in some cases, that could be a cohort going through that might need some additional support. In other cases, it could be a specific class that had a high level of registration where it needs to be split in order to provide a better learning environment for students. Our high school and our middle school administration are, you know, very intentional about how they use that. And frankly, every year, they've had to make some decisions about it in terms of how do they use it. So what we're proposing is to add an additional 2.0 FTE to that fund. We have run into many times in the past couple of years where, especially at the secondary level, our administrators are having to make some very difficult decisions as to where to allocate contingency at the end. Do we provide it to a chemistry class or do we end up providing it to a very large mathematics class? There could be various decisions that they're making. By having this additional flexibility, they can make a dent in some of those class size concerns by having the ability to be proactive and knowing that they have some additional FTE in the tank. Now, again, I think what the benefits are, are the fact that we can make those just-in-time adjustments, sometimes even in the middle of August, depending upon late registration in terms of students moving to the district. But each year, when it comes back to the district coffers, if we were to have a time where we needed to make budget adjustments, that would be an area we could reduce. And yes, there'd be an impact on class size, but we most likely would not have to reduce staff in that particular scenario. So it's a proactive way to address our class size issues while maintaining the greatest flexibility that we have for the long term. And what I want to emphasize is that it's a strategy, not a fix. I have, my youngest is going to be in ninth grade next year, which I'm clearly not old enough for that, right? But Principal Joel Lear shared, there are 160 different courses that you can take at Northfield High School, 75 of which are singletons. That means that class is only offered once during the day. We often say we provide our students a choice at Northfield High School that is probably the equivalent of a school about a size and a half larger than what we are. And when we offer that choice, as Joel was sharing, that the average class size in the high school is 27 and a half, if all of the students were laid out perfectly in nice little neat bins across the entire way. But of course, that's not the way it works. There are circumstances where kids might have an automotive class, for example, with 15 students, but they also might have a mathematics class or a science class with 38 students or even a few more in that. When we offer this comprehensive curriculum, that we offer all sorts of choices to kids, there is a consequence for that. And the consequence for that is if you support a section of 15, it has to come out in the wash someplace else because we have been fiscally responsible and we make sure that we are looking at the, the number of FTE that we have at our secondary buildings. And so the contingency proposal gives us an opportunity to address that particular strategic plan component in a very real way because, again, you'd easily be able to address 10 additional sections at the secondary right away. That would make our principals' lives much easier at the high school in terms of not having to make some specific decisions and at the middle school as well. It also would allow us the flexibility to continue to address if we, most of our sections in our elementaries are four sections. There, there are enough students to wear with Compañeros. We have a solid four-section building. But from time to time, we do have a section that might need to have a fifth section at one of our buildings. And so this, again, provides the flexibility for us to address that. And, you know, once, we, we try not to have to come back to you to ask you for additional FTE. From time to time, we do. We think that this would also provide us, provide us an opportunity where we wouldn't have to do that. We'd have it in the tank. And of course, you know that Val and I are not going to allow that money to be used if it doesn't need to be used. If there's a reason for it to be used, of course, we'll use it. And if not, we'll say, well, we can hold that in the tank for this year and we'll go back to the six next years. I can assure you, it's not something we'll spend just to spend, but I think it's going to give us the greatest flexibility to make sure that we can address those specific class size issues in a proactive way. So I'm not asking for a vote this evening, but what I wanted to do is just give you a heads up that this is something that aligns with our strategic plan. You have the financial information. The total contingency fund cost increase would be about $116,978 for next year. And you'll see how we calculate it because there's no perfect way to calculate this. So we use a blended calculation that allows us to be, we want to be as close as we possibly can, but as you know, we don't know who the teachers are, who would be assigned overloads yet. They all have a different compensation level. We don't know which elementary teachers would be people who would have that fifth section. So we don't know what their experience level is and how that would play out. But this is the best way that we can attempt to look ahead and say, what's a reasonable amount for the budget in terms of this particular approach? So I wanted just to share that with you at this point. And if people have questions, initial questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we'll bring it forward to the next meeting to ask for you to consider it in terms of voting for it.
Amy?
So I have several questions. The first question is, do you sort of go into it thinking we're going to give one FTE to each of the elementary schools and the middle schools and then two to the high school? Is there, do you think that way? Or is it sort of, oh, we have this big pool and we'll divide it up or?
So what we do is we talk with our administrators about looking ahead. We, in general, we know the cohorts for next year at the elementary level and we're able to predict, in general, where we might need a class, an extra class. So for example, Sibley, which has five sections of fourth grade this year, because when we were going into the summer, those classes were nearly at 30 in the contemporary sections. And the history has been, we ended up seeing a few more in that section as we move ahead. Of course, we, we built it and some of those students actually left. So many of those classes in that fourth grade this year are now below 30, quite a distance below 30. So they will not get, you know, they've already said, we don't expect a fifth section for fifth grade next year because that enrollment has scaled back a bit. So we don't just say everybody gets one or a part of one. We try to look at where do we know there are additional students? So we know that at Bridgewater, there's still a group there that will probably need some support in five sections for next year. We also know that, you'll remember, this year's junior class was by far the largest class we had had in a long time, at nearly 360 students at one point, you know, 40 or so more than any other grade level. When those students were in the middle school, the middle school got some additional contingency funding because as those students were going through, they needed to be supported because those class sizes could be somewhat reasonable. When that group moved to the high school, it followed them as they had gone. Now, we have some other classes that are getting nearly to the same size as that junior class. And so that's where this additional flexibility will help out. So it isn't a program that everybody gets an equal amount. We are taking a look at what are the registration, who are the students that are here? We try to hold some of that until August because it is not uncommon for us to see a surge in registration in August. And of course, they tend to come to the same class at the same school. So we want to make sure that we have the flexibility to address that as well. But it's not just everybody gets something. It is where do we get, there are years where people don't get any contingency money. There are years where one school might get the bulk of it because they have the bulk of the class size issues that year. Is that helpful?
Yeah, that's, that's, I was, that's what I was assuming it was, but I just wanted to hear it.
Sure.
I also have a question about how often do you actually end up hiring a full FTE new person with the contingency funds?
It's usually pretty rare. It's usually quite rare. In fact, I think the only time where I could see us doing that would be at the elementary level. Now, there have been times at the middle school, specifically in sixth grade, where sometimes we have hired a science person who might be four tenths or six tenths, depending upon the makeup. But most often, if we do a full-time 1.0 FTE, someone new, it is usually for an elementary section. Most of the time, we are actually just at the secondary using an overload strategy where a teacher will have an additional class period. They're compensated and the contract drives how that is compensated, but it is rare that at the secondary level, we hire a full-time person with contingency money.
I guess, that's, that's good. I guess part of my concern was, I, I like the idea of contingency, but I also am concerned about bringing people on as full-time staff and they'll know it's a temporary thing, but it's, there's, you know, how do you handle that at the end of the year?
So if you think about it, the secondary level, if we have a large group of ninth graders, let's say, we're not going to, you know, because of the licensure restrictions, we're not going to be able to hire one person to handle that. We're going to need to have one section probably in science, one section in mathematics, a section in, maybe a section or two in social studies. So it's, we wouldn't even be able to really do that to address those kinds of class size needs at the high school because of the differentiation, the licensure.
But at the elementary school, maybe?
Elementary school, almost always, that's the strategy.
Other questions? Margaret?
If we have, let's say, a science class, we've talked about this before, where you've got labs to do and so on, and you get a class of 38 in there, could this contingency fund be used to get more paraprofessional EA time to help that science teacher or the, you know, so, you know, whatever teacher has this excessively large class so that we can offer more choice?
So we, we have very rarely used some contingency money to fight, to support an educational assistant. Now, almost always, that has been at the elementary school. And it's at the, at the elementary school where we're in a space crunch, where there is no more room to add another section. And so an educational assistant might be hired to provide some reading support, some additional kinds of support there. And the question, the case there, in fact, that's an exact reason why I'm asking for more contingency fund because my preference with the science piece would be to break that into two sections. You know? Now, there are some other things with some things that if we want to continue to have the choice that we have, especially at the high school, we are going to have to start thinking a little bit differently about some of the way that we offer some things. So, you know, we could see some different instructional style practices down the line that would understand that there's time for lecture, there's time for lab, those kinds of things. But at this point, my preference in a science situation like that would be to be able to split that class rather than inserting an educational assistant.
Thank you.
Rob?
All right, two questions.
Excellent.
First question is, if you have a class that, I mean, is there a policy for taking classes off the books that after the enrollment gets to a certain low level so that that actually frees up existing FTE? So if you have a class that only has five or six people in it, do you get, do you take that off the books and then free up that FTE?
The answer is yes and no. And as usual, a good administrative answer is it depends. And the reason that I say that is because, I'll give you an example. Several years ago, we had a very small registration for our highest level Spanish course. And we looked at saying, do we potentially, there were less than seven, I think it was six kids that had signed up for it. You know, however, as we discussed that here at this board, we discussed the fact that those students, when they had been in Compañeros, had expected to be able to go all the way through high school to that Spanish five. Well, because of that smaller registration that time, we wanted to support that. And if you remember, that's when we looked at it and did something different and changed that to another AP course. So now there are two Spanish AP courses. That has helped with the registration. There are other times where we have maybe a specialized language or it could be a course in our career technical education area that we know is really important for a lot of kids, where we will support a lower level enrollment to make sure that the programming can keep going because maybe there's a change in the curriculum, maybe there's been a modification to some of the approach. So really, we trust our high school administration to try to make that decision. And yes, the question is, there are courses that are on the books that don't receive enough registration to run. Some, from time to time, I'll bet you there's some that have a handful of students more than some that we may continue to run because there's been some specialized promise or some kind of expectation. And again, as we look at, you know, again, I think the pure technical education is a really good example. There are some courses that we know we need to give a few years to get off the ground. And so supporting those in the formative years when it's a new course, we think is really important to make sure that that particular discipline area has the ability to be successful long-term. There are consequences for doing that. That's, that's a problem, but that's a decision, it's a judgment call that our high school administrators and counseling team need to make, looking at the good of the whole building, you know, as opposed to just making everything perfectly even across the board.
And then my second question is, we have in the past year or so approved additional FTE for special education. And when we do that, that's like a permanent thing in that, so I'm wondering, I mean, this is, we're approving this contingency fund for general education, not special education. When we approve special education FTE, say we need an extra EBD teacher or something, does that always have to be for EBD or do we just have that FTE for anything in special education?
So if Cheryl Hall were here, she would tell you about maintenance of effort, doesn't necessarily look at specific disability areas, but what it does look at is making sure that you are spending roughly the same amount of educate, roughly the same amount of dollars on special education from year to year so you're not cutting a position out of special ed to make your general fund be able to handle some other pieces. So the truth is that yes, as long as the overall dollars are similar, I don't know what the exact variation is, but as long as we're within that variation that is set by the state, you could transfer from an EBD teacher to, say, another NB neurobiological teacher if that was where the students were. Of course, we're always, special education, we're always programming based upon the individual Of course, we're always, special education, we're always programming based upon the individual student's disabilities. And so if we have a large group of students who exit from EBD, which happens from time to time, but not all that often, or they exit from the elementary into the middle school, that may shift how we spend that FTE. And I'll take this opportunity to say that I hope that board members and the folks who are watching at home will call their legislators and talk about increasing special education funding because we are spending roughly $3.6 million of our general fund budget to cross-subsidize morally imperative, in my opinion, and mandatory services for students with disabilities. There's, you're going to get no argument from me that that is morally imperative instruction, yet it's another example of a mandate that we have where the funding doesn't come along with it. $3.6 million is a lot of money. And if the legislature would help us by increasing the per pupil for the special education formula, it would go along, every dollar that we raise in special education funding frees up a general fund dollar. And so we even have more flexibility in that particular case. So thanks for teeing me up, Rob, because you know I can't resist a board meeting where we don't talk to the legislature about something.
Other questions?
I'm sure they're all watching our board meetings.
I had one question. I was curious about how this fit into thinking about the physical setting. So you had talked, when Amy had asked about the different ways that you consider the elementary versus the high school, but sometimes the physical setting of the space may not be able to hold that many students. So I would assume that would be one more way that you would think about using this money?
You're absolutely correct. And so there are limitations to our space. Fortunately, at our secondary buildings, overall, this is not entirely true, but overall, we are not to the point regularly where we are asking teachers to leave their, the classroom where they spend the most of their day so that another teacher can come in and teach in the room. We do have that happening at the high school in a couple of cases this year, but it's not rampant. So in terms of at the secondary level, we have some flexibility yet. It's not the preferred method, but we do have room in the schedule to be able to, if we had to move a teacher out of their room during their prep, for example, or during their supervision, we could certainly do that yet. It is trickier at the elementary school. And we, we're going to do a facilities update in a little bit, and we are really, what a difference a year makes. We were at the edge of space issues at our elementary schools last year. We are there now. And so the issue is that, for example, even if we wanted this year to have added another section at Sibley, let's just say we had another class that really was large, which our fifth grade is bigger than we would like it, there would not have been any space to put those students and we would have had to have gone to a portable, you know, and at great expense in terms of that. Now, there's a whole bunch of other rules about portables that weren't there the last time that Northfield Schools had portables that are going to make it even more expensive. And so as we talk about facilities a little bit later, the elementary schools, that is far less, especially, and a lot of that also comes from special education because we're having more students qualify for services that where they require fewer students in a traditional classroom. Again, exactly how we should be programming for students, but does it make our real space issues at the elementaries any different or anything less than real? So yes, we would be, if there's not, we may have to start some, you know, there might be some creative pieces that, looking at, if that were the case, maybe do you look at some co-teaching or some of those other kinds of things, ways that you can break it down by an economy of scale, you know, rather than necessarily splitting the class directly.
Great. Thank you. There's no more questions. We will move on to the next item, which is also Dr. Hillman.
On a roll this evening.
We are moving on to the proposed 2019-2020 calendar. We've got two different calendars on our agenda now. We are looking at the 1920 one as an item for discussion.
So again, something we're really happy with is starting to look at school calendars more than one year out, right? Because it was so often in February of a year, we were looking at the calendar for next year. What we know as people in the community in many jobs, they are now having to actually bid for vacation more than a year out. So we have actually already had calls in the district office about when will the 1920 calendar be ready? Again, we're not talking about next year's school calendar, we're looking about this calendar for the following year. So I'm really pleased to bring this to you. This was reviewed by the Meet and Confer Committee a week ago. Julie and Ellen sit on that committee. And so as you look at it, what we have in this particular calendar, we have school starting after Labor Day by statute on September 3, 2019. You'll see that it's a relatively traditional calendar, looking at some days off in October to support the Minnesota Education Association Fall Break and the conference. We look at some days at Thanksgiving. This will be the second year where the staff, the teaching staff and students have the 27th of November, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving off. You'll notice that the way that the holidays fall during 19 and 20, being in the middle of the week, that this is a year where, if you remember, we've had criteria, in general, if we can get three days in a school week, we go to school. And if we can't, then we say that we're going to try to take that whole week off, with the exception, of course, being the Thanksgiving because that's just something we can't control typically, or anytime, actually. But you'll see we have a two-week winter break on this calendar for 1920. It's just, it does not happen every year. It's been several years since we've had this, but this is the way that these particular dates fall. You'll see that we have Dr., it's a Dr. King's birthday, his offer, teaching staff and for students. You'll also see we have the traditional spring break. One thing you'll notice is that school ends on June 5. And this year, in 2020, we'll actually have a staff development day on June 8. That's just a function of how the calendar falls and we are actually looking at trying to have kind of a closure professional development day, and this will be the year that we try that. So again, relatively standard calendar. There are only so many ways to assign 174 school days. And so this is what the recommendation of the Meet and Confer Committee is. Again, not asking for action on this evening, but just wanted to bring it to your attention. And we'll ask for action at the March Board Meeting.
Any questions by board members? Rob?
So looking, I mean, I remember when I first got on the board, we were talking about a balanced calendar. And I see that there are 38 days in term three and 49 days in term four. Which term do most of the standardized tests come in? I mean, because some of those days are going to be taken up entirely by testing. So do they come in term four when we have more days to do it in or?
So the testing calendar has really expanded over the years. What our secondary teachers tell us is that it's important for the semesters to balance. That's their greatest piece. And the issue that we have is, we actually looked at this case in terms of looking at moving spring break one week later because that would have evened out the two quarters. The issue is that that is a year, and it's not very often, where Carlton and St. Olaf, the stars align, and both of them have spring break the same week. Now, we have to understand that, you know, both Carlton and St. Olaf, a lot of people in the community, a lot of people have children in the school, and we know that people, especially when those two calendars align, we think that we need to try to align with that spring break. Otherwise, normally, we have to, we pick one or the other. It's not a selection, but it's what's best for our calendar. So the Meet and Confer Committee looked at that and determined that because both of those spring breaks aligned that year, we felt it was appropriate to align that year. Now, I think the bulk of the testing, as I look at it, I can't say if the bulk will happen in third or fourth. Some of it will start to happen in March. They've changed the way that they do that over the years, but the window does go through April, so through late April. So it's, it's, we haven't seen the assessment calendar from the state yet. Maybe we'll finally have some sensible legislation that comes on that. I'm not holding my breath. But the fact is, if it's based upon what it is right now, I would say it's probably going to be a mix between some of it in March and some of it in April. And of course, at the high school, the AP tests tend, you know, they always happen in quarter book.
Other questions? Great. Well, this Meet and Confer has done a really nice job and I really appreciate the teachers that spend the time thinking about this and bringing it to the board. Wonderful. We are ready to move on to our next item, which is Dr. Hillman again.
There we go.
Master Facilities Plan update.
Yes, and so I don't have a handout for you this. I just thought it was time to give you an update as to where we're at with the master facilities planning process. And so I'm happy to share with you that tomorrow night, we will have our first ongoing facilities committee meeting. So if you remember back when we adopted the master facilities plan, there were a series of potential pathways for addressing space needs within the district. It also, that plan also includes our long-term facilities maintenance and operating capital as part of that planning process as well, something that you heard tonight. And then in addition, it had talked about an ongoing facilities committee, much like we have an ongoing finance committee, an ongoing Northfield Forward, an ongoing Northfield Act, and some of these other committees that are regular committees that happen all the time. And so tomorrow night, we're having our first meeting. Board members Noel Stratmon and Amy Gerwitz are the board representatives on that particular committee. We have six individuals who are coming tomorrow night at the start. And then we'll also be adding in Jim Colseth, will co-chair that committee with me. And we'll be adding to that committee tomorrow night. It's really an orientation session just to talk with folks about what the annual meetings. We anticipate this group will meet three times a year. In some years, it might meet more than that, but that's really kind of the final piece of the master facilities plan. And if you remember, last winter, we intentionally delayed the implementation of that committee. But they will be meeting tomorrow night. They'll be going through some of the same things that you saw tonight with long-term facilities, maintenance and capital. They'll be seeing some of the building plans that we have had as part of our master facilities plan. And again, just getting oriented, we anticipate in the fall, that committee will probably get together and actually do a tour of facilities to show what were the improvements that were made over the summer. We anticipate that they'll meet in December, right around the same time that the capital allocation meeting happens so that they can provide their feedback on the plan that we have for allocating capital and long-term facilities maintenance the next year. And then one more time, typically probably late February, early March, just to help finalize those plans for the final year. And again, the point of these committees is to provide feedback and through your board members, you know, in terms of being able to say, what does this other group of people from within the community have to say about it? So just want to tell you, we're excited to get that up and going. We've got a good group of people coming in and we're pretty fired up about that. The second part that we'll be talking about, that will begin to happen yet this spring, most likely in mid to late March and through April, is we will be inviting a cross-section of the community to come in to look at our master facilities plan and provide feedback in terms of the way that we currently have it structured, in terms of projects that we have, and also the timelines that we've looked at. As we know, we had an election in November, that we had all of the current projects on the ballot, and we know that that was not successful in terms of the voters gave us feedback that we are serious in listening to. This was a three-year process and literally involved hundreds of people's feedback. What we're going to go do, we're going to be making sure that we have a good cross-representation of the community on a group that comes in to provide some additional feedback about where they think we're at right now in terms of the projects that we have on the master facilities plan and the timing of them. So we'll be asked, we'll be sharing the updates in terms of the real space concerns that we have across our elementary schools, and we'll be asking for their feedback to share with you because, of course, you're the folks that make the decisions as to what or when we would go to the community to enact any of the parts of the master facilities plan. So, you know, we had that election in November. There's the aftermath of the election in terms of really trying to learn from the election, finalizing all the things that you have to do with the state. We come back in January, we're starting to plan for next year, as you've heard at the last couple of board meetings. And now it's time to get started back with getting some feedback from folks on this process. So we hadn't talked about it in a while. I just wanted to give you an update as to where we're at. So we'd be happy to take any questions, but this is really more just heads up, more to come, and you'll be getting additional information as we move forward.
Questions? Rob?
So in the lead-up to the last, the bond referendum, a lot of my thinking about that was informed by listening to people on the finance committee because they were talking about how, you know, how can we finance is what's reasonable to ask. Now, we have a facilities committee, so is there going to be some sort of coordination? How do you bring together the advice that you get from finance and the advice you get from facilities committees to come up with a package that is informed by both of those sets of input?
That's a great question, Rob. And so how I anticipate it is that as we get the feedback from the master facilities, from the facilities action team is what I'm calling it, and we get the feedback on the timing, we get feedback on the projects, then I think it's the responsibility of the professional staff to take a look at that and say, okay, here are a couple of ways we could attack this, get the feedback from that particular committee, share those concepts with the finance committee as well, and then bring forward to you, here's what the facilities folks have said, here's what the finance folks have said, and then, of course, that informs your decision as a board. I could see it happening where we have a joint committee meeting. That's not my intent right now. It very well could be that some of the people on the finance committee end up on some of the facilities action team. But at the same time, I think those independent thoughts are important and you being, that those thoughts being shared with you could inform whatever decision you would direct us to do moving forward. Is that helpful?
Other questions?
I have another one, and it relates to what Rob was saying. So I wanted to just understand, so there's the facilities committee, which you laid out the schedule, and then there's the facilities action team that you said is going to get together in late March and April. Now, the facilities action team, that's not an ongoing, permanent thing. This is going to be a very temporary.
Correct. This is going to be the single group that takes a look at these pieces right now. The ongoing facilities committee, as you know, with our committees, we try not to have 25 people on our regular committees because we need to have a group of people that are there to provide feedback. We want to promote discussion. Usually, there's six community members, there's a few professional staff, a couple of board members, probably 10 to 12 people on a number of those committees, which Northfield Forward is a little different, that's a little bit bigger, but it's a specified piece. So in this particular case, that ongoing facilities, some of those members could also be on the action team if they so chose. We would certainly offer that to them. However, they are intended to be providing feedback for the foreseeable future every year, regardless of what happens with our building plans. They're going to be giving feedback on things like the middle school pool, like we've got a couple of things going in tonight. They're going to be giving feedback on, I could see them feedback, giving feedback on energy savings kinds of projects, like the really great work we've done at the middle school with LED lighting. They may help us provide a different perspective on prioritizing some of those projects. The building part is one part of that, but the ongoing upkeep and other maintenance is an important part that that committee will do in an ongoing way. Does that answer the question?
That helps to define the roles.
That's good. And just the other piece too, just to share that the work is going to be pretty important because we did not try to frame the bond referendum this fall based upon space, right? In terms of we were, however, in this year, one year later, the space issue is becoming a real, real concern. And Aaron Bailey and I took a tour of Longfellow today where, again, the growth in our early childhood programming is such that it's not out of the realm of possibility that we could be coming to you talking about a portable classroom for next year. Now, of course, we would never put preschool children in a portable classroom, but what we would put is some professional staff in a portable classroom to free up. Now, we have some other thoughts that might be able to work to where we could avoid, at least for one more year, a portable classroom. But we know how important early childhood education is and we do not want to turn people away. And we're at that point with some of our daycare component, which of course is huge because that's what we call the wraparound childcare for people to be able to access preschool. You know, we're at a point where we are out of room. And without a creative solution at Longfellow, there would be families who have been with us in the daycare who potentially could be turned away. Not okay. And so we have to find a way. Aaron's been very creative. She's got a really interesting plan that we're going to talk about tomorrow. But we are also have asked Jim Colseth, Director Buildings and Grounds, to look at, how would you even do a portable at Longfellow? But we are nearly out of options. We are getting them a model lactation station so that we can, you know, have those spaces because there is no more room. And Longfellow is a place where we are, we are out of space this close. And our elementary schools are not far behind. On that happy note.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you to Jim for all your work in getting ready for these committees. That's great. Great. Well, that was our last item for discussion report. We are ready to move on to our items for individual action. The first item for individual action is the co-curricular additions. And board members, you have that in your packet. Dr. Hillman, do you want to?
Sure.
Share anything about?
So we just brought this to the table the last time, and as you know, we've talked about this a couple of times this year with now the board approving any changes in terms of additional positions on, or removal of positions in terms of coaching or advising. We had also mentioned to you that as we started this, we had not done any changes to this group of positions for several years. And so we had anticipated a little bit of a backlog as we got started. All the positions that I presented at the last time are things for the next school year. None of them are for this school year, so they can be taken into account during the budgeting process for next year, which we weren't able to do this year. But I think as you see, there's some things that you, you just got to be thrilled with the fact that we have a ton more kids participating in middle school speech to where they need to have an additional coach. That's a good thing. The increase in participation in Knowledge Bowl, and of course, our fall music programs, you know, continue to get more and more complex as we're asking more and more of our actors and actresses. So these pieces are things that we are recommending to you as reasonable and areas where we need to go.
So board members, this is an item for individual action, so I would ask for a motion So board members, this is an item for individual action, so I would ask for a motion a second before we had any questions. Moved by Noel. Seconded by Margaret. Questions? Rob?
I have a question. I mean, these are all good things, I support all of them. I'm just wondering about things like rock and roll revival, which brings in a lot of money. I mean, is there any sense in which what they bring in offsets what we're asking to increase the budget by?
Going to ask Val to talk about this a little bit.
So historically, the Schedule C stipends have been part of the general fund, and the revenue that's generated goes to offset the production costs. So it's always kind of been this separate, whatever they bring in is basically their budget for the production. So it's certainly something we can talk about moving forward, but it would be a change for that particular program.
Other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to support the additional coaching and advising positions as recommended by the district's co-curricular committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, your second item for individual action is a small correction to the 2018-19 school calendar.
Yeah, so as we looked at this calendar recently, and you know how many sets of eyes look at this calendar before it comes to you, right? I can't say any other way that I'm embarrassed that we had placed Dr. King's birthday in January one week earlier than what it is. So in the adopted version of the calendar, it was on the calendar for January 14th. Of course, Dr. King's observed birthday is always the third Monday in January, so we're asking to make that correction. At the same time, we're also asking to make one additional correction of something that we learned this year. On February 18th next year, we have a staff development day scheduled. This year, we had a staff development scheduled day last Monday, and I'll be straightforward that Mary Grace Hansen and I were really sweating every snowstorm that came through, because we had a full day of very important professional development for our reading implementation next year. And if you remember, if we had had three snow days prior to the 16th of February, we're going to recapture the 19th as a student contact day. Now, back when we did this, it was the year that, if you remember, we had five or six days one year, that was just that totally ridiculous winter. And when we started having that February professional development day, we did a lot of things that were really good, but we've also learned to leverage that for things that we're looking at implementing the following year. And so we do have this scheduled for next year, we have already talked about using it as a, at the elementary level, as a full day to support mid-year needs and professional development for our new reading curriculum. So this calendar also just says, we're not going to use February 18th as a student makeup day, so that Mary can sleep at night for those couple of weeks beforehand. And in addition, we think it shows respect to our staff, who have really worked hard to provide a high-quality, engaging day of professional development for our staff members. We have just added those makeup days then to the end of the school year, as you will see.
All right. So because this is an item for individual action, if there are questions, I would ask first for a motion and a second to motion to approve the revision to the 2018-19 school calendar. Moved by Margaret. Seconded by Amy. Any questions? Discussion?
Just want to know, we will make sure that we over-communicate this change, but we actually did have also one parent call and say, do you realize that this is? And we said, yep, we've got it, we're taking care of it, but, you know, we'll make sure that we send this out yet this week, just to make this correction, and then we will be directing principals as we go into next year, to make sure that people have the updated calendar.
All right. So we have a motion and a second on the table to approve the correction to the 2018-19 calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We are ready to move on to our items for consent grouping, and I'll remind board members there were just a few items to add to the consent grouping from your table file. Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Or anything, wait, anything anybody wishes to call from the consent grouping? No? Okay. A motion to approve the consent grouping?
Moved.
Moved by Rob. Seconded by Jeff. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the consent grouping is approved. We have one item for information. Dr. Homan's going to talk to us a little bit about the school security procedures in light of recent events, I think that we're all really interested in finding out more.
Yeah, so it is, it's really been a challenging week, you know, for us as Americans. The Parkland massacre, you know, which occurred on February 14th weighs heavy in everyone's mind, and of course, across the United States, people are really looking at, how can we make sure that we keep our kids safe? What I want to share with folks is that statistically, remember that kids are safer at school than they are even at home, right? So despite these very public and very horrific events, schools are still the safest place, you know, for kids to be. Some of you, I know, you know, everyone reads my blog, right? But for people who read my blog, you know, that I've written about this in the last week, I sent a message similar to my blog post to all district employees last week, and every building principal followed up with something similar to their families last week. So, and really focusing, those messages were really focused on making sure that people have the tools to talk with children about violence, because, you know, something that we think maybe we could have avoided talking with our children about on a regular basis, we have no choice anymore. And so we've used the resources from the National School of Psychologists Association, shared those far and wide, and we've talked about how we know that our best defense against these kinds of horrific circumstances is strong relationships with kids. So I think that that's important, I'm going to weave that throughout, but I think it's also fair to talk to you a little bit about some of the physical security pieces and the way that we try to manage crisis within the district. One of the pieces that Jim Colseth does for the district is he is the manager of our crisis plan, which is available on our website, folks can see it under the Buildings and Grounds page, and it provides a lot of information. Now, you also have to have the balance about how much information do you provide? Because frankly, in a number of these circumstances, people have used the school's own security procedures against them, because they knew what the response was going to be. It's a terrible thing. It is a terrible thing. And everyone's heart should be just, our hearts are very heavy, because this is a very difficult time. But I do need to share with you a handful of the things. I'm not going to be getting into specific strategies or things like that, if people are really interested in us getting to the nitty-gritty of that, but we are allowed to hold a closed session of the board to talk about those kinds of pieces, and if the board would have an interest in that, we could certainly do that, and Jim and I could be very detailed on the procedures that we use. So it's going to be higher level. We really focus on making sure that we look every year at what possible security updates we have. And I want to be really clear, we balance, have a strong balance between a secure facility with an inviting learning environment. And so the balance that we are always looking at, that we do not want kids to feel like they are imprisoned, right? But we want to make sure that we are as secure as we reasonably can. And so what you know is, several years ago, we spent some of our, this is again, good stewardship, we had a capital, an operating capital fund balance that we used to really do some work on all of our entryways to our schools. So, you know, we did really major upgrades at Longfellow, we installed, we did a major upgrade at the middle school, creating what we call TSA kind of Sally ports, where in order to get into the school, you have to go through the officer, be buzzed in. At buildings where that was not feasible at the time, a camera and buzzer system was implemented, so people just can't get into the building unattended. At the high school here, where we do not have that camera and buzzer system yet, we still employ someone who actually is the greeter and answers people at the door, and helps direct them to where they need to go. So each of our buildings are a, I would call it a controlled entrance, maybe not to that point of what you would typically call a true secure entrance. But again, we are doing the, you know, we've taken those major steps to make sure that once the school day starts in general, the doors are locked. And so people are buzzed in from that particular perspective, getting into the building. We also, as was mentioned, we practice this pretty regularly. We practice five lockdown drills per year, that's what the state requirement is. And then the one time where we really had to use a lockdown drill, if you recall, was an after, wasn't a lockdown drill, but an actual lockdown, was in after-school circumstance, where there was an issue within the community, where there was someone at large, where the police did not have the complete whereabouts, and we got feedback after that from the sheriff's office, saying that, wow, you guys know what you're doing, because everybody followed the procedures appropriately. So, you know, we hope to never have to use it, but we know that we practice it, and we know that in the one circumstance that we've had to use, we have had positive feedback. But you're only as good as your last time that you had to use it, so we continue to try to work on that. A key part of this is prevention. In fact, we typically want to go to those kinds of things that we can see in front of us, that make us feel more secure, but the truth is, in schools, where we really need to do our work is in prevention. What I want to share with you are a handful of the things that we have done to make sure that we are having a very strong prevention program. So all teachers, teachers in grades five through 12 have been trained in mental health first aid. We actually have our recertification coming up this summer, so teachers will be getting, in grades five through 12, will be getting that again. Our crisis teams have all been trained in what's called the Prepare Framework, and that again, is something from, is recommended by the National School of Psychologists Association. This talks about prevention, it talks about managing the crisis, and then also, what so many people forget about is having to have a plan for after the crisis. And so having, and there's got to be, Jim, do you think, maybe 60 people across the district who are part of that?
Yeah.
I'm guessing that, so it's the crisis team for each building. Again, we need to do the recertification of that this summer, and we'll be doing that this summer. As you know, we've also implemented social-emotional learning curriculum in grades K through eight. Part of that is to make sure that kids understand how to process emotion, kids have an understanding of who they can connect with for additional help, trying to help give students the pro-social skills to recognize if they have a situation where they may need some help, that they know how to get it, and that they also can help. Just helping students work through conflict resolution, some of those other interactions that we know can lead to some of these really terrible circumstances. We are very proud of the Peer Helper Program that we implemented here at the high school this year, Students Helping Students. That's based upon the Hazelden curriculum, in terms of providing students who, they're not providing mental health assistance to their peers, but they're trained to look out for the signs, and also how to help connect their peers with the adult professionals who can assist them with their needs. And so those are all good pieces. You know that we share a school resource officer, it's a piece that we do pay for, part of it for the city, and that officer also does the DARE program, which really has been focused, it was, as you know, it was started about, really about drugs, but it has really turned into a program about decision-making. And so Officer Bart Weiss is an integral part of our school staff, and he's here every day, helping our students, and in fact, many students have such a great relationship, we're going to stop to say hello to him. Again, that prevention, having a law enforcement officer who can see and can trust in the building is so important. And we'd be remiss to, the original piece that I think a lot of schools do to work on this is our responsive classroom approach. And so students in grades K through five, in almost every room in our district, you'll see in the morning, the morning meeting that happens every day, that's intended to teach kids those pro-social skills, again, that conflict resolution, taking turns, all of those things that we know create a foundation for good decision-making as kids get older. And so we do a lot of work about, around prevention. I am sure that I have missed some things, and I haven't even talked about what HCI or the Northfield Healthy Community Initiative does. And so there's a whole suite of things outside of the school where we focus on prevention. What we know is, when kids are greeted each day, and we know that kids have a caring adult in the building, they are more likely to share with the adult their concerns. And I can tell you with certainty that that works. I can tell you with certainty that kids have shared concerns with adults in this building that have allowed us to help diffuse a situation or prevent something. And I'll just give a public example that we had last year, was when students were looking at participating in the Day Without Immigrants protest in town. Our administrators knew about that several weeks in advance, and were able to make sure that students understood, how do they exercise their First Amendment rights appropriately, not disrupting the rest of the school, yet being able to participate? That was such a good level of communication, even though that's not necessarily about the school security we're talking about right now, but the fact that kids were comfortable enough to go to adults in the building and say, hey, we're thinking about doing this, that is, in fact, many schools learned about it that day, when kids just said, hey, we're going to try to do something. I think that that shows the relationship that we have, especially at our high school, between our very caring staff and our students, and I think that that's a win. And I absolutely understand that right now, people are talking about all sorts of legislation that people believe can fix this. There's no one fix, and that prevention cannot be undersold. So when we hear about things like additional mental health workers within the schools, or school, funding from the state would be very helpful in that prevention effort. But we also have to talk to you, just want to share with you the reactive part, or our, the school safety, the physical safety component. So several years ago, we were also, I had our staff trained in what's now called the Run, Hide, Fight approach, and we were one of the first school districts to receive that training. In fact, after we got some training, there were some questions between the fire marshal and what could we actually do in that training, because some of it involved blocking some entries, and basically, what Run, Hide, Fight does is it really provides the classroom teacher, the person in charge of children, some autonomy to make a decision. So for example, if I know that there's an intruder, and the intruder's on the other side of the building, that empowers the teacher to get out of the building through the nearest exit. Jim Colseth has worked very hard at developing what's called a reunification plan. It's a very detailed document that says that should we have to execute it? We know where kids are going to go, we know where they're going to, we have a plan for how to reunify children with their families. It's really well thought out, and it's something, again, we hope we never have to use. The other part of it is that if you believe that the intruder is in part of your building, you pile, you barricade the door to the best of your ability. Now, we had this training in 2013, we are looking at how can we have that updated training yet this spring? And again, it was relatively new at the time, so I, it's something that we need to update, and I would say, if you talk to our staff, it's something that they know how to do, a lot of our staff do, but we have so many new people since then, and because of the concerns that we had right after getting the training with some of the disconnect at the time between service agencies, that's something we need to come back and do more of. We also have our district's crisis plan, again, it's got directions for numerous scenarios, ranging from a training derailment to some of the more horrific things that we hope we never have to think about. We also have started with our administrative team, we've done twice already this year, where we don't tell them, but at one of our leadership meetings, Jim and I come with a tabletop exercise, and what we say is, here's the circumstance, get into groups, and how are we going to handle it? And so we're trying to role-play and do some anticipation of some of these kinds of things, so that when the real thing happens, we don't act like, oh my God, what's going? We have had some practice in doing this now. There's too many scenarios to really try to be able to play out, but I want you to know that we are doing those what are called tabletop exercises, and that's a best practice. If you talk to security experts, they say, doing those kinds of tabletop exercises several times a year is a good thing. We also have had several of our school leaders participate in active shooter training with Rice County Sheriff's Office and Northfield Police Department in 2016. So again, a number of things from the straight school security perspective that we have also been training on. As you all know, our master facilities plan includes recommended security enhancements at Bridgewater, Greenville Park, and Northfield High School, and I think that this really shows that we're very intentional about an ongoing effort to improve security at each building. Now, we do have our doors locked, we do have a controlled method of letting people in. We have a lot of people who, if they see someone who doesn't have a visitor badge on the hall this morning, I just, someone in the hall, I just, hey, can I help you find where you're going? Was actually a volunteer in one of our classrooms, just hadn't put on their lanyard yet. And so again, those are the kinds of things that we're doing each day to try to, from the physical security perspective, go down that road. Now, I know that there are calls in the media and across for things like bag searches or metal detectors. This is the balance that we need to think about, because we want our schools to be secure, but we also want them to be a learning environment. I have worked in environments where there are metal detectors, in fact, I use metal detectors, and when I worked for the Bronx YMCA in college, when kids came in, I used the wand to have every kid who came in, and I will tell you, people here do not know what that feels like, and it's a very, it sets a very different tone. Not saying that that's not something that we may get to, but what I will tell you is it will forever change how kids come to school. I've had some folks, and the suggestions are all coming from a place of pain. So we have to understand that. So we're very patient, we talk through things. We've had people suggest that we search everyone's bag who comes in the building every day. It's not just here, this is something you can read in the media. First of all, TLO versus New Jersey clearly says that we cannot search a student's bag without having some kind of reasonable suspicion. Entering the school building is not reasonable suspicion. So I think that will be interesting if schools do implement that. I believe that case law would say that that's illegal at this point. There are a number of other things that, out of pain, people are looking at, how can we do this, that either just aren't feasible, you know, in our schools, or they would forever change how kids would look at their school environment. Jim Colseth, again, Jim, we're so thankful you're here. Jim is always looking at, what can we do next? One of the things that we're trying to see, would it work for us, is something called the 3M, it's called the 3M Safety and Security Window Film. the 3M, it's called the 3M Safety and Security Window Film. That's something that we could actually, it's a film that you can apply to glass pieces that make it bullet resistant, is probably the best way to say it. It would not allow the, the window to break. Those are kinds of things that we look at, and we can say, okay, that's a reasonable thing that we can probably take an action on in the next couple of years and try to address those pieces. So there, there's a lot of things that we're, we certainly will look at and, and consider things. But I just, I want folks to know, as we think about this, that safety of our kids is, so I have two children who come to this school district every day, so don't kid yourself that I'm thinking every day, you know, about, and, and all of these children are my responsibility. And so we are looking at, how can we continue to make sure that buildings are secure? And the best security, I, I know for a number of reasons. I had a chance to sit for an entire morning with Chris Dunshee several years ago, who was the principal at Red Lake High School, when that school endured a shooting. And what Chris Dunshee told us that day is that guns, guards, and gates do not protect you. You think they do, but they don't. What really protects you is having proactive relationships with students. So I know that that sounds academic and a, and a little bit superfluous, you know, in terms of this, but the truth is, what we know as educators is that is our best line of defense, and we'll keep addressing that in every way we possibly can. That being said, there are also some things about security that are out of my control. Even when I become the commissioner, I'm not going to be able to control all those things. What we have to do is we have to make sure that we can take all of the reasonable security precautions that we can, and then, within reason, making sure it's still an inviting learning environment, and then also making sure that kids know that we care about them. Because when kids know that we care, and they have at least one adult who they believe they have a connection with, we will find out these pieces. But we're also trying to explain the actions of madmen. We're trying to make sense out of senselessness, and it's very difficult. It's very difficult. Now, there are some things that some other bodies might be able to do that we don't have control over at this point to help us out. That would be nice. But we don't have that control. So I thought, you know, it was, it's reasonable for us to talk about, I will tell you, it's, it is, we have heavy hearts. And if people think that we aren't looking at this and saying every day, my goodness, what more do we have to do to try to keep these children safe? I can tell you that every educator in this building, and the entire district, is looking at this and saying, you know, what, what can we reasonably do? And there are some things that are out there that are not reasonable for us to do. I shall not mention them at this point, though I think people at this table know what I'm talking about. And we will endeavor to persevere and continue to try to make sure that kids are safe every day while making sure it's a place that they know we're coming to, to learn, and it's a place that they like coming to, because they trust the people here, and it's a good learning environment for them. So our hearts are certainly with, our hearts, frankly, my anger is with the people of Parkland. And it's, it's absolutely ridiculous that we have to spend time on a board even talking about this, but that's where we're at in 2018. So anyway, that is my soliloquy on the subject, and I will certainly take any questions or discussion at this time.
Rob?
I've learned from Noel that if I have something important to say, I should write it out. So I have written this out.
More important to do that, stroke.
So bear with me, please. My youngest son entered kindergarten in 1999, the year of Columbine. Graduated from high school in 2012, the year of Sandy Hook. In my years as a parent of school-aged children, there have been 30 fatal school shootings. More than 300 people have died in those shootings, including 11 teachers, five principals, and a school psychologist. Among the fatalities were 26 and 7-year-olds at Sandy Hook Elementary School, five 11 and 12-year-olds at Westside Middle School, and 14, 14 to 17-year-olds at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. Over 150,000 students have experienced a shooting at their school. All of us who have been parents of schoolchildren in those, those years have felt some level of fear for the safety of our children. It's possible that mental illness was a factor in some of those shootings, although research has found that less than 5% of all gun-related killings in the United States between 2001 and 2010 were committed by people diagnosed with mental illness. It's likely that anger and alienation were factors in most of them. Nearly all of the shooters have been male. All of these murders have been committed with guns. We can address issues of mental illness, anger, and alienation through our attention in and out of the classroom to the social and emotional needs of our students. We can encourage and model less destructive expressions of masculinity. We can secure our buildings and have regular lockdown drills. We can enforce strict policies against firearms on campus. What we cannot do is fund more counselors and school psychologists to work with students on these issues. What we cannot do is keep AR-15s, the type of semi-automatic weapon used at both Sandy Hook and Marjory Stoneman Douglas, out of the hands of potential school shooters. This requires legislative action. The time for such action is long past due. As many of you know, I supported making clay target a varsity sport at Northfield High School. I visited the clay target team at the rifle range in Morristown, and I was impressed with the discipline, the regard for safety, and the training in responsible gun ownership that the students were receiving. This is something that I continue to support. I support the legitimate and responsible use of firearms for hunting and sport. I do not support the availability of assault rifles, or bump stocks, or a range of deadly weapons whose only conceivable legitimate use is by the military for training and combat. Schools should not be turned into combat zones. After the school shooting in Florida, students at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School and around the country have raised their voices calling for action. They have called for stricter gun laws, including a ban on assault weapons. In the midst of their grief, they have demanded accountability from politicians. They have asked us, as adults and elected officials, to keep them safe. Their demands are not unreasonable. They demand the freedom to complete their K-12 education without fear of being slaughtered in their classrooms. The students have taken the lead on this issue. I strongly believe that it is our responsibility as school board members to join our voices with theirs in this call for action. If someone can carry a Bushmaster into an elementary school, we have failed as a society in our responsibility to our children. If an assistant football coach has to give his life to save the lives of his students from a shooter, we have failed. If teachers anywhere in this country have to think about whether they would die for their students, and most of them would, we have failed. If teachers are willing to die for their students, the least we can do as school board members is to pass a resolution demanding stricter gun laws, including a ban on assault, ban on assault rifles and high-capacity magazines that could save the lives of both students and their teachers. At the same time, I believe we must ask for increased funding from the state to provide school counselors and psychological support services for our students. Similar resolutions were unanimously passed last week by the Fairfax County, Virginia School Board and the Addison Central School District in Vermont, and are under consideration by other school districts in the, across the country. In Vermont, the Republican governor has already joined Democratic state legislatures and legislators in supporting universal background checks and other school, and other gun control measures, which had previously failed to gain traction in that state. My sister, who's a school board member who helped draft the resolution in Vermont, has received calls from legislatures telling her, legislators telling her that the resolution was a factor in moving the legislature to action. If nothing changes, I feel as if it's only a matter of time before every one of us is touched personally at zero degrees of separation by the loss and grief that the students in Parkland, Florida are feeling right now. Something has to be done to stop it. I no longer have children in the school, but every morning I look out my window and see the neighborhood children waiting for the bus on the corner, and every day I pray that they will come home safely. They are my responsibility. They are our responsibility. I don't think silence now is an option for any adults who feel a responsibility for these children's precious, unique, and irreplaceable lives. Thank you.
Other board members' comments or response? I agree with every word. Every word.
Next up, then, any proposed follow-up or updates?
Rob?
I have the, I've sent the text of the Fairfax County, Virginia, and the Addison County, Vermont resolutions to Matt, to Dr. Hillman, and obviously because situations are different in Minnesota, there's different legislation, and, and we're different places, I think that he would have to look at those resolutions and see what would be appropriate for us to, to discuss and pass. But I think sending a unified, unified message to our legislators that we don't want this to happen in Northfield, we don't want this to happen anywhere else. And we can't solve this on our own. We need, we need their help to do this, and legislation is part of the, the solution.
I think it's a great idea. I think we should find some way that we can have a voice in this situation, and I hope, Dr. Hillman, that you'll consider this example that Rob has sent, and if you need any help putting something together, you know, I just heard Rob's an eloquent writer, but I'd be happy to help as well.
He is the poet laureate, so we expect that he's an eloquent writer.
Noel, do you have any comments?
It's a big issue, and I think it requires a lot of thoughtful. I'm not ready to move on it right now.
No, I guess we, I wasn't asking for emotions, though. I was just, comments.
I think it's one of the issues that if you don't do it thoughtfully, you may wish you had. It's a country crisis, but it shouldn't be a crisis response.
Oh, and we have some time, you know, Rob is not asking for, there's nothing on the board, you know, but there's an opportunity for, if, if the will of the board is for me to work on that, I will certainly do so, and we can certainly look at that, you know, bring something forward at the next board meeting if that's what people are interested in.
So typically, I just, we're going to frame this as that I think what we're talking about is a, as a resolution. And so typically, what, what always a resolution means, this is a roll call vote. So I guess, you know, we can, if you don't feel comfortable voicing where you feel like you sit, maybe letting Dr. Hillman know before the next board meeting, a little bit more about what your thoughts are if the board were to go in this direction. But I would, I guess, invite comments. Now, I know we don't have board chair, um, just doing here either.
One of the things we learned recently is that I don't believe that this kind of resolution would actually require a roll call vote. We learned that from MSBA recently, that there's, excuse me, there's a couple of different pieces there, so that's something that Board Chair Pritchard and I have been looking at in terms of just how we handle resolutions moving forward. There are some that require a roll call, some that don't. So we're just, we're learning more about that in terms of those separations.
But it sounds like right now, just asking for, let's step forward on a thought, a resolution, and, and to consider it.
Noel?
I'm wondering if individual action might be more effective than a board action. Because frequently you'll read that a letter to the legislator means there are seven to 10 people that have the same opinion that didn't write a letter. And I'm wondering if there would be, you know, I'm, I'm not competent to be able to write that, write kind of a letter that might be effective, but I think there are people in this room that would. And, and I'd be willing to look at a, at a proposed draft that I could use as a, you know, a very, very general template of how to address a letter to the senator, to a legislative representative. And I'm wondering if that might also be done. I'm not saying that the board shouldn't probably do something, but I think individual action is oftentimes as effective, it could be more effective.
I think that as individuals, if this is important to us, we need to make our voices heard, but I think as a group, we are collectively responsibility for, responsible for the safety of students, and we're collectively responsible for doing our utmost to create an environment, including legislatively, that provides for the safety of our students. And if there's something that we can't provide from our local resources, we have to go beyond that to our legislators at the state and ask them to help us with that. And I think we need to do that as a group to, to indicate that that's the, the feeling of the board who is responsibility, is responsible for the students. So, and I'm not, I mean, there are, there are certain bits of legislation that are currently being discussed, and I wouldn't necessarily specifically say we support HF blah, 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 but I would say these are the kind of actions that we think would, would provide for the security of our students. And I think the, the efforts of students around the country, and the efforts, as I've said, in Vermont, where you have a Republican governor, Phil Scott, who is joining with Democrats in the legislature to, to move to do this, I think this is something where if we don't sort of use the momentum, momentum that the students themselves have created, and they're asking for their own safety, I think we have to join them in doing that in whatever way it's possible. And I think this is one way that we can do that.
Jeff?
Like Matt was saying, it's the blend between creating a, a safe, sound learning environment and, and, you know, not making it look like you're coming to a federal prison, you know? That's, that's kind of the, the point, what's, what are the checks and balances in between and all of that? But, you know, and I think that to be upfront with kids nowadays and to tell them, you know, here's the situation, they have these drills, to be kind of self-aware, and, you know, throw that psychology piece and to recognize all of that stuff is just kind of where we're at in our culture. We just need to really, you know, recognize it and understand it and then deal with it, you know, head on. So, but, you know, the words are great, and I appreciate you writing that up.
Thank you.
All right. Amy?
I have a sense that the students might have some, at the high school and maybe other schools have some actions that they're planning in the future in conjunction with other national activities that are happening. So it seems like it's not just the students in Florida, it's going to be the students in Northfield as well. And, and there might be some timing possibilities available with that, too, if we, if we know sort of what's being planned, and maybe we can add, add our voice to the student voices and have a unified community, as much as possible, voice there. Also, there's C-Day at the Capitol.
March 13th.
So another thing to keep in mind, I'm hoping to go this year, I hope more of us can go and actually talk to the legislators and, and get that personal contact, and let them know that this is something we're very concerned with.
Thanks, Amy. Thanks for that reminder about March 13th, everyone. Other comments from board members? Margaret?
Well, I think in the history of, of school boards, there probably has never been an issue that is truly life or death. There's been education and ignorance, and there's been hungry and fed. But I feel right now that the, the kids are literally begging the adults to save their lives. And I think this is probably the, as I said, the rule of school boards, I think this is probably the first time I've come up against a life or death situation. And I, I agree with Rob that it's time to take a step beyond what we might normally do as individuals and move to a body saying, please, please, we can't let these kids die in their classrooms anymore. This is a life or death issue. And I think the onus is on us as adults to stick our necks out this time.
Thanks, Margaret. I think that frames it, I know that's one of the things I've been thinking about, is we haven't, the board typically taken an action in this way, but that would frame it as, in terms of a precedent, as we are looking at it, as a life or death sort of situation, not as, because there are many, many important issues that we...
of situation, not as, because there are many, many important issues that we face.
Yeah. You know, I think it's really important that we continue to talk about never again, you know, to the best of our abilities. And I know that our hearts are heavy, mine is heavy, as you could hear in my voice. You know, however, again, I do want to go back to, I think it's important that the adults talk about these pieces and find what's the appropriate. But I think it's also important to come back to what we started with, which is that statistically, schools are still the safest place for students to be, it's safer for kids to be here at school than it is to be at home. And so, schools in general are a safe place. However, there is this piece that we, we need to make sure that we're continually cognizant of to make them even safer. And so, I do think it's important to recognize that, you know, schools are the safest place for kids to be from a data perspective and from a research perspective. However, there are some things that have happened that have really shook our core, and that's what we're discussing here. So, I think that that's important, that, you know, I send my two children still to this building, you know, these buildings every day, knowing that it's a great place for them to be, it's a great place for them to learn, it's fantastic. We want to keep it that way, but at the same time, we cannot be blind at these national events either, and we need to talk about how do they affect us here in Northfield. But I greet kids most every Monday morning out here in the upper, lower cafeteria and say good morning and greet people and how are you? And this is a great place for kids to be. We just need to make it even better and more secure and safer within that balance that Jeff has said. So, our hearts are heavy. We want to make sure that this does not happen again anywhere in the United States, because as Rob said, none of us should have to be thinking about, is this even a possibility? You know, but at the same time, for the kids coming through the doors each day, know that we have your back. We're going to take care of you, and we'll keep doing that. So, this is just that next step that we, we need to think, we can think about as an elected board and as educators who are concerned about these things happening elsewhere.
Haven't you used the phrase continuous improvement?
You bet. Absolutely.
I think this is a form of continuous improvement.
Probably the most important part of continuous improvement.
I want to thank Rob for giving voice to, you know, thoughts that many of us cannot be quite as articulate of expressing. It sounds like there is interest from the board in having Dr. Hillman consider what something like, I'm seeing some nods and spending some time on that. I think putting it in the context of Northfield and the state of Minnesota would be important. And I guess, board members, if you have additional thoughts before the next board meeting to get them to Dr. Hillman.
Could I ask Rob to share the samples that he's shared with you, Dr. Hillman? So, we all can see the samples?
Yep. I'll send them out individually, you know, but the pieces here, this is one of those areas where I'll send them out, but we're, you know, if you have direct comments, don't respond to everyone. You need to respond to me directly.
Right. But that, that way, we would have more of a sense of what you're starting with and what resonates with us and what might not.
Yep. The key thing is I can send that to you, but you can only respond to me directly.
Right. Conduct our business here as a board.
Exactly. Thank you.
The other very important point would be to, you know, not spill our marbles in the lobby. In other words, to be smart of what we know as confidential information and not share that with people that just ask us in general. So, yeah, I think we need to be briefed on, you know, the protocol for that and what's procedure, obviously.
I'm not sure I understand. I'm sorry. Just what, what he, what the drafts, Dr.?
No, I'm talking about, you know, somebody asks you a question on, you know, if you know more detail about, you know, what this tactical process is in this school.
You're talking about a specific?
Yeah, you know, and you know that. I mean, you want to definitely make sure that you're briefed on what's okay and what's not okay to say.
Thank you. Now, I understand it.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, again, that's the, as we said before, that's not something we would want to talk about specifically in an open forum, you know, because we are able to give an overview of what we are doing, the processes that we use. If that is something that the board would like a more detailed, step-by-step presentation, I do believe the open meeting law allows us to close a school board meeting for that particular purpose. So, just like we would do a negotiation strategy meeting, we could certainly do something if that is something that board members would like more specific information on. But I also agree with what Jeff is saying, is that we want to be open, and we want to share with our approach to people, but we also, the specific strategies that we use are things that we, we want to make sure that we're just appropriately cautious with.
Pardon me. Along those lines, Dr. Hillman.
Do you want to come up to the mics?
Sure. Just FYI, our current crisis plan is not on our webpage for general consumption. It's under the staff portal.
Thank you for that clarification, Jeff.
All right. Well, I appreciate this really rich discussion on such an important matter where, as Dr. Hillman said, we, we're all feeling it. So, as, what we're going to do is, if you have any other suggestions, to relay them directly to Dr. Hillman. So, with that, I'm going to move on to the next, which is looking at future meetings.
You bet. We've got March 12th coming up.
And please note, we are not meeting the second board meeting in March because of spring break, so March 12th, and then April 9th.
That's correct.
All right. With that, I would ask for a motion for, oh, do you have a question?
I would be happy to make an emotion adjourned, but before I do that, I want to express to the public the visible leadership that we saw tonight from Ellen, who was filling in for our chair, who was gone. Thank you. And for Dr. Hillman, who has provided tremendous leadership on very, very difficult issues tonight. So, thank you.
Thanks to Dr. Hardy for sharing his thoughts here tonight, too.
So, with that, I move to adjourn.
All right. We've got a motion from Noel to adjourn. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor of adjourned meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Meeting is adjourned.